I hated it. I used to get so depressed. I got so depressed and with such a headache, I says, "I'd rather not miss sixty minutes tonight." So I've taken it. And I don't wanna miss America's Got Talent. Every day I'm gonna miss something that isn't worth missing. To hear people screaming about it.
Well, I guess.
Listen, we missed the president's speaker. We missed about the first half hour.
But it really made me say, this is what we're in the board, nobody else has a say to the very end. The leadership is gonna have bullshit all night. Last meeting I went to, other than the other night, Linda DeKoff, who I've never had a word with in my life. I don't know her, I don't hear all the stories. I said, "What are we here for?" When Scott Sam, when Dan Coco was removed from the presidency. I said impeach, but they said it wasn't impeached. Well, that sounds like a good word, right? So she, I just said, "What are we here for?" Because they asked a question. I says, "Do we have a right to know why the person we voted in is being taken out?" She says, "No, you don't." I says, "What am I here for?" She said, "I'm not invited."
Go.
No, she says, "You don't. I'm not invited. Go." To that, I said, "I can't believe it." I paid between assessments and maintenance, seven hundred and some odd dollars a month. Five oh six maintenance, we're talking about raising, it's not as high as in all of the inquiries.
It's going up.
Going up. Put me on the, put me on the delinquent list.
Going up.
Put me on the delinquent list, because you're not doing shit about the ones that aren't paying for two years.
Can I have a word, that's why?
Why should I care? Get me out.
I tell you why you should.
I want to know something.
Because I'm sure you have a credit rating, right?
Yeah.
That'll go down in the toilet.
It's not enough of a threat. But I'm not, I'm gonna pay.
I know you are, but I'm just telling you what would happen.
Look, I got two hundred and forty dollars in late fees. They keep sending me letters. I bring them into the office, I give them to the girl. I say, "Would you please give this to the office manager after I call me?" Bullshit. Let the two hundred and forty go up to ninety million. I don't really have it.
Can I have a word, that's why, please? I'm a woman, but I wanna word that's why.
Yeah.
I just wanna ask a question. There's a notice posted in my, my, uh, my letterbox area. That there's a meeting on Monday with lawyers. And the public is not invited. They wanted to discuss negotiation with people that owe money. Negotiation possible, possible negotiates with the defish, the deficits people. And they also wanna discuss the possibility of raising maintenance. And those two items.
They're not raising, no, not.
And this is a question.
No, it didn't have maintenance, no.
It doesn't say on, anything on that notice about raising.
I know what the second thing is.
Whatever the second thing, it had nothing to do with raising maintenance.
Well, I don't, I forget it.
Well, the reason for that is they posted a notice for a, uh, a delinquency committee. That's a delinquency committee. Phoebe Cohen's on, it was in a finance committee. Phoebe Cohen is on there, on a finance committee. I don't believe Phoebe Cohen is qualified to be on a finance committee. You have someone else who's on the committee, who I don't believe is qualified. People who are qualified. Jerry could be on a finance committee. Maybe he is, are you?
I am.
Okay. And Stuart could be on the finance committee, but Stuart and I don't get invited, see? Because we won't go on any committee where the president can take you off the committee. Like she said, I was on, what committee was I on? The budget committee.
No, no, you were on, you were on the amendment committee.
No, budget committee.
But you were on the amendment committee twenty years ago.
You resigned from the budget committee. I said, "I didn't." She said, "Yes, you did." So I said the other night, Wednesday night, when, when I suggested that we have, do something about illegal residents. Where we have hundreds of them here, walking in and out the gate with compounded families in, in, in some apartments. They have to know who is living here, because it's important. A lot of these apartments are being rented, when they're being rented illegally. The apartments are in foreclosure. The owners are delinquent. We have to take some steps, steps to stop them renting or getting the money from those tenants. We gotta know who's here. And we don't. So I, I believe I have the formula, how to do that. How to, how to set up a committee and go after the illegal residents. Not a piece of cake, a lot of work. So she said, "Mr. Samuels, will you take care of that committee?" I said, "Absolutely." Providing you give me an authorized statement that you will not let me do my, myself. Make me the chairman, let me pick my own people, and you don't interfere with it. She said, "Never mind." So this is the problem.
Well, it's not a problem, because let's be fair about it, okay? You were president for quite a while.
We don't wanna discuss ancient history.
Jerry, Jerry, Jerry.
Let me finish my sentence. We're talking about what he was running ten years ago.
You shut up, you don't know. Jerry, you weren't living here.
Wait a second. I was living here when you were president. You were very nice to me when I lived here, when you were president. But I, I always say, you know, if you're willing to put on the shoe, then it's something that I would consider putting on. Okay? And when you were president, if you made that same proposal to somebody on the board, that they'd be willing to chair a committee, if they had complete autonomy and authority, I guarantee you, I guarantee you, and everybody here knows you, you would not do that. So I don't understand why you would expect Francis, who's president, she has, she's in charge of committees. Why would you ask her, why would you ask her to let you be autonomous?
Wait a second.
What happened took care of it until now?
Wait a second.
That's why.
You're bringing something up.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying.
Your perspective from ten years ago. But let me ask you a question. Answer this question.
I'll be glad to.
What would be the right thing to do?
For you to be a chairperson of a committee.
What would be the right to do if you or Steve or anyone was going to do that?
I love, I think you're very right.
Okay, so what is the right thing to do?
The right thing is for you to be a committee chairperson without any special, you know.
So how can you motivate people?
She said, she offered you. She appointed you committee chairperson.
How can you get good people and motivate them?
You're a good person.
Here's a man who could, who could be head of our security committee. Listen to him.
Who, Steve?
Steve. Hey. And give him carte blanche. And if you give him carte blanche, you say, "Steve, take care of that job."
There's no such thing as carte. What do you mean carte blanche? Who is carte blanche? The president doesn't have carte blanche.
Oh, carte. Now you're making a fool of yourself.
No, he's making a point. What do you mean by carte blanche?
Are you kidding? Don't start with that nonsense about a pill of my car. Don't worry about me.
Jerry, I don't, I don't, I don't.
No, I agree. There's no meaning. There's not any meaning.
That's all.
It's not an argument. It's not an argument.
He's so, recommend things to the board. A president or somebody else can't say, "Okay, Joe, you're in charge of the committee, but I'm gonna pick the people who are gonna work for you." And he looks at them and he says, "I don't want them." So he's off the committee.
So why can't it be a, a mutual vote amongst all the board members? Not just Francis Mesiro.
Why? You think the board members are smarter?
No.
The board, alright.
It's not the smart.
Why would you say the board members? Check Robert's Rules of Order. There's two ways to do it. You appoint the chairperson, and you let him run with the board. If you wanna, take a business. If you open up a sales department, and you're a man, and you're a production man, let's say, fully. And you get a salesman. You're gonna hire his salesman, and you only know production? You tell the salesman, "Go get your friends and the people you know are smart enough to, to go and sell my product." And vice versa.
You got too many egos. You got too many egos, from what I can see, and I'm pretty quiet usually. Too many egos on that board.
Have you ever worked in a corporation?
Of course, I've owned a corporation.
And you, and how did you pick your people?
Carefully.
How'd you pick your department?
Carefully, but I supervised, I watched over them.
How did you get them?
No one's gonna say to me, "If I'm in charge of that department, you stick your nose out." If I own the business.
Just a second.
Hey, bravo.
No, I mean, really.
I didn't say you stick your nose out. You don't interfere with the function of the committee.
Obviously, she interferes. I don't disagree with you.
No.
Scott, let's go onward, because I think it's time.
There's no love lost on that, on that board, and that's the problem. Can't get along.
Well, it doesn't look like we're getting enough people there.
The fact remains that the board did not take care of all of us until now. We find out who lives in my apartment, and how anybody's here illegally. Years ago, my husband was president, was on the board too. He knew, they knew everybody, John Molly was there too. They knew everybody that was there. They knew the people that were there illegally, that they were shoved out, they were, they were, they were dispossessed. Things were different, because the board knew what was going on.
The management company, obviously, I don't know them, I'm not against them. They don't care.
Who doesn't care?
They manage me.
But that's not true. They care about getting their check on the first of the month.
Stuart, I don't wanna go into the whole. It's too much. Okay, so just, so what we wanna do, the real, the purpose in calling this meeting. I'll give you a brief background. Our manager has not been doing the work that he is supposed to have done for the money that he's costing the association, upwards of eighty thousand dollars a year. That's what it costs us. He earns over sixty, there's a thirty-two and a half percent burden on it, and it costs us eighty thousand dollars a year. We got a man in the office that never goes out and inspects the community. He never goes up on a roof, because he can't because of a disability. He goes to the bank to make his own deposits. He can't send anybody. He goes to corporate to bring papers. He goes to the post office to bring mail, and for that, we pay him eighty thousand dollars a year. And that is absolutely unacceptable.
I'll do it for sixty, and I'll go up on the roof.
I'll do it for fifty-five, and I'll do everything.
There you go. Do I hear forty? Forty, and I'll go up on the roof with him.
You guys wanna joke about this?
Well, have to have a word.
No jokes.
Please, let me finish. Give me the courtesy. I didn't let, I didn't interrupt you with wise class. If you want, I'm good at that.
I'm sure, I've heard you.
Believe me. So we got a man who's a property manager, can't go up on a roof, can't, does not drive a golf cart because he can't. He doesn't, hasn't spent one full week in this community since he came here seventeen months ago, sixteen months ago. He's been out, and he, he does his own post office, he goes to the bank, and he spends eighty percent of his, ninety percent of his time sending emails to, to the board members and wherever else he does. We asked for copies of his emails. He said, "You can't get them because it's not legal." We protested. We pointed out to the lawyer that we knew of a, a recent case, an arbitration case called Humphrey, where it opened the door to get emails. And we reminded the lawyer about Humphrey. And the lawyer said, "We know about Humphrey." The next thing they did, they told Howard that any email that goes in and out of his computer is public records, and that any unit owner can make a request for all the emails. So we went in and made a request for emails. And we got emails for the past two months that are this thick, single pages. You're talking maybe seven hundred and fifty to a thousand emails went in and out of that office. Emails between him and, and the board members. And emails between him and his company. Emails from his company to him. Emails from Francis Mesiro to him, and back and forth. And all the backroom dealings that went on while this guy is the manager. He's having private meetings with them. He's making private deals with them. He runs private errands for them. Okay? He ends up, there was a case here where Elan Weiss, a unit owner, was not allowed to talk at a meeting, because it was the end of the meeting. And he sued because of a disability. So there was a hot case. And the lawyer, and he said, "If Stuart and Scott would apologize that he, he didn't speak at the microphone, then he would drop the case." So the lawyer said, "Well, this is what Elan Weiss wants." He wants Scott and Stuart to, to apologize. The lawyer never called us and said, "Hey, give me your side of the story." The next thing we know, we get an email that Howard Carter sent to Francis Mesiro that said, "I went to the ombudsman's office, which is the State Department of Business and Professional Regulation, on our money, and I asked them how I could make Scott and Stuart admit that they did something wrong." And that's what he did for eighty thousand dollars a year. That's, that's what managers. So the manager, as far as we're concerned, is no good. Now, on Tuesday, three weeks back, Stuart and I had a meeting with Robert White, the managing director. But let's go back further, to March, Stuart. Tell us what happened in March when we met Steve Mason about, about Howard.
We met with him on a Friday afternoon.
Come over here, Stuart.
Who's Scott Mason? The guy that was at the meeting the other night?
No, no. This, this was a private meeting in a small card room between Scott, me, and Steve Mason. And the topic of the meeting was Howard Carter. And we listed somewhere around twenty incidents, each one individually, would be grounds for termination. He agreed with us a hundred percent. Some of it he didn't know, some of it he knew. He said, "I'll get back to you in a couple of days." We said, "We, we don't care if you fire him, whatever you wanna do with him, just get him out of here." Says, "I'll see if I can find him a place." That was March fifteenth. He never, ever got back to us. That would show his total unprofessionalism and badness.
So that was, that was Steve Mason. So now, we met with his boss, the managing director, one of the owners of KW Management. In the card room, three weeks ago, this coming thing's there. And we had two, two hours with him. And we told him all these things that the man was doing, how he was violating state law. And he got very upset about that. He said, "I didn't realize there were statutory violations." And there were many of them. A statutory violation is, is calling an emergency meeting when there wasn't one. So the president goes over to him and says, "I gotta have a meeting, because I can't go the next day, so make an emergency." So he said it's an emergency. Well, the law doesn't say that's an emergency. You gotta have fires, storms, floods to have an emergency. So he broke the law that we know of ten or fifteen times, and we never filed one complaint against him. And we went in the office and tried to help him through these tough parts. And he never, he, he, he got a little better, because we were backing him up. But he, he not, we never got our money's worth. You go looking for him, he's not here. He's at the bank, he's at the post office, he's down corporate. He goes for corporate training for three days, we pay it. He takes holidays, he takes, we pay the whole thing.
Comes in late, he's early.
Plus vacation. We're getting, we're big suckers here. So anyhow, we end up that meeting with this guy, and we say, "We don't want him back." This is three weeks ago. He says, "Well, I think that, I understand now, and I have my way, and I am going to take care of it." Leaving us with the impression that this man is going away on a two-week holiday unpaid, and he's not coming back. Okay? So Steve Mason comes in.
Unpaid, is that what you said? Unpaid, leave of absence. Leave of absence. He went on an unpaid?
Yeah, unpaid.
I didn't thought it was paid.
So two weeks, two, two weeks go, two weeks go by. Steve Mason, very sharp guy, understood everything. You don't have to say anything to him twice. He knows the law. And Steve Mason comes out, and he understands where we're coming from. I don't know whether he inferred that he is or he isn't coming back, but this is, this is what prompted this meeting tonight. Because tomorrow, we're getting an eighty thousand dollar a year guy who's gonna be sitting on the computer, doesn't go out, and we're gonna have to put up with him until they get a replacement. Now, here's a letter. I'm gonna read it to you Thursday afternoon, Thursday, September tenth, six forty P M. From Steve Mason, he's the district director. Dear board, it has been a pleasure spending a lot of time covering your community during Howard's absence. During my time, there were several items I immediately recognized that are of concern. I addressed several of those items, mostly operational decisions and the way the staff has been trained. It is apparent that the office staff was working in a manner that does not prove an efficient way to run the business. I have retrained the staff and given each person additional responsibilities to be more productive and efficient. This is just one example. There are several other items that is not, that are not, to my satisfaction, whereas I am recommending a change in the manager position. As a district manager, we continue to interview several manager candidates for the growth of our company. There are several candidates that I would like to present as a replacement. I would like to set up these candidates to meet with you in the same fashion you interviewed Howard, half the board in one room and half in the other, without a quarter. I do not want to make this public knowledge at this time. The main reason would be that if word gets out, there will be an outbreak of phones, calls to the office. That is unfair to Howard. And, and the staff is also unaware. I will tell them once the time comes, when the selection is made, and we have a transition date set. I have discussed this with the board president and several other board members, not us. And after long thought process and evaluation, I truly feel this is the best solution for the association. So that's Thursday, six forty P M. Friday, Stuart and I go into the office, and we have this letter from him. And we say, "You tell me he's coming back?" He says, "Yes, he's coming back." Why? Because you have to have somebody there. So I said, "Why?" He's gone, we're managing without him. Get us a new man. Why should we be paying him fifteen hundred dollars a week when he's a lame duck manager who's inefficient? And that was the end of the story. Meanwhile, I sent out that message to those of you who get my emails, so you've heard all of that. And I hear this from the board, zero. This from the president. Then we wanna, we go to the president, and we say, that same day, Friday, and we send her an email. Stuart and I would like to sit down with you and discuss this issue. That's all we said. In the best interest of the community, we wanna discuss this issue. She get back, and she says, "I don't wanna talk to you privately." Well, we never said anything about privately. We said, "We wanted to meet with her." She could've brought anyone she wanted. But we wanted to talk to her and say to her, "Why are you wanna take this man back?" And we can't get that message to her. And who's gonna get it? Maybe the people can, maybe other people can. But so we decided at that time, we would have a meeting tonight to disclose this and to disclose other things. And in order to make it more interesting, we'd go back, because a lot of people, after the right last meeting, and after they got that notice of a, an assessment, are, are in a daze. They said, "How did we get here? How did we get broke? We are broke." Broke means we have virtually no reserves. We don't even have a half a month of reserve money. If the money doesn't come in for one month, you gotta shut down the payroll. That's how bad it is. So that's why we're here. We prepared a long narrative, would take me fifteen minutes to read. And without enough, enough people, more people who wanna be here, I don't wanna do that twice. So I would hold back that, because it's, it's very long and, and protracted, and covers everything from, that we believe, from Wilma. From Wilma is when our problems started. We had the hurricane, the, the things that went into effect right after Wilma, with the contractors, with the consult, with the bank loans, and all of these things, they're all mucked up. And everybody dropped the ball on the way. And that's what brought us to this particular thing.
Scott, can I ask you one question, please?
Where are you from, you're French?
Wait, I'm not.
Okay, okay.
So, so that is the total of what I was gonna say. In the final analysis of what we're gonna say, we wanted to warn everybody that whoever is legit and is not delinquent, is going to have to carry the load for the people who are delinquent. There's no, there's no, there's no compromise. There's no compromise. You have to do it. Every individual is, every unit owner has a responsibility to pay their maintenance when due, within ten days of the first of the month. So that means if you don't pay, you get a late fee. And you get a, a late fee of twenty-five dollars. And then you get letters, and you go to the attorney, and then it could, it could be exacerbated. I heard a story that one of the unit owners told me last week, that a hundred and twenty-five people are putting their money into escrow. You can't do that. You gotta pay the association. Where are we going from here? We're going to get this one-month assessment. A few weeks ago, the accountant, the accountant got up before the board, and he said, "We need eight to ten percent increase in maintenance in two thousand and ten." The board has not restricted how much increase they give you. I believe it will go up to fifteen percent on the, on the first, in the budget that has to come out before the end of November. Why is it fifteen percent? Because we are losing every single month this year, and it's continuing. All the deadbeats, who are deadbeats, who have run up bills, and this is remarkable. There were some people on the association up to seventeen thousand dollars. How did they get that high?
Because nobody did anything about it.
Who's watching the store? If someone owes two hundred dollars, I wanna go chasing them, right? Nobody did it. Twenty months ago, twenty-one months ago, in January of two thousand and eight, Stuart and I just got on the board, and we met with all the other board members. Joe Frederick was there. And we said, "We need, we wanted, we wanted a foreclosure prevention committee." Twenty-one months ago, we said that. We wanted a finance committee, we wanted a legal committee. Right? We did all, said all these things, and we were turned down cold. Absolutely turned down. Now, twenty months later, they're saying, "You know what? Oh, we wanted to talk face-to-face with the delinquents. We wanted to take the delinquents and meet them." Now, when I was president, and the guy was delinquent, call him on the phone. "Come in the office, what's wrong?" Ask him what's wrong, and he'd say, "I got a tough time." Well, okay, but you gotta give me something every month, a little bit. You make a deal, or a stipulation. When we offered that at that meeting, they said, "You don't do that. It has to go to the lawyer, it has to go to..." Well, things have been going to the lawyer for the last twenty months. And you know who has the only authority in international village to, to put a lien and send, and send, send a, 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 a a delinquent to, what is it?
Foreclosure.
Foreclosure? Tell them who it is.
Howard Carter.
Howard Carter, the property manager, is the only one, never presented to the board. One time, "Hey, we wanna send this guy to the, to the foreclosure."
Not only that.
Maybe we know him.
Let me say something here. Howard Carter has zero background in credit and collection. Has no clue at all. What his criteria is to send or not to send, I asked him. He said, he shrugged his shoulders. I don't know what that means. But he, I, I, I wanna see one person he didn't send in. I mean, he has sent in cases that are unbelievable, where they're innocent. Joe is one. Scott is another one, right here. That he sent in?
Yep.
And, and I can't figure it out, because, am I right, Joe? Well, you get automatic, right?
No, we pay.
Ah! That's the reason, no, I'm kidding. But Scott, as an example, they take the money out of his account every month. As long as there's money there, there's no way he could be delinquent. Impossible. Well, that's another story on how they handle our accounts.
So we believe that we are going, we're fed up with the way money has been wasted in the community. We have a whole list of how money was wasted, in the construction process, all the things that were done wrong. We believe were done wrong. From the very beginning, how the contractors were paid, how they paid hundreds of thousands of dollars more for contracts than we should've paid, according to other professionals.
Let me just say something here, because since Joe is right here. Now, I was at the meeting before the Pegasus contract for two million, I think it was fifty thousand dollars, Joe? Something like that, right? Okay. Now, I asked our attorney, and right now, who happened to be Lee Katzman, I said, "There are a hundred and sixteen suits and judgments going both ways, against Pegasus and for Pegasus. Don't you think we should hold everything up and investigate it?" His answer to me was, "No problem." Then I said, "I found Pegasus operates under about five or six different names." Again, he said, "No problem." Now, Saul Gugler read a contract like nobody I knows. Every, dot everything. He had about thirty questions to ask Lee Katzman. He asked two or three, and Lee Katzman's answer was the same, "No problem." Now, Joe got up and practically on his knees, said, "Give me a week to investigate the contract." Then I went over to Joe and said, "You need more than a week, you need a month." Then I went over to Joe and said, you need more than a week, you need a month. He said, you're crazy, I can't get an hour. And the vote was five to four, they approved the contract, and it was wonderful job that they did. Not only didn't they fix it right, they made it worse, they wrecked the units, am I right, Joe?
They, they.
They also had a, we had to evacuate the Heidelberg.
The Heidelberg got so bad it had to be evacuated for a month. It was never, never any contract.
Two months.
Some people were going more, depending on the damage you had. And it was never.
That's not.
Of course.
Let's start from now, what are we doing now about two hundred people that aren't paying anything?
Well, you know, I'm not qualified, according to the president or Stuart, to be on the delinquency committee because of our last names. It already pisses off, because we got the wrong last name. But they have people on the committee that are gonna do, come up with something. There's a meeting tomorrow that you brought up, and it's called an attorney privileged meeting. And they took a committee, and they're making this, they're gonna have a meeting with the collection attorney. Now, we don't have very high regard for this collection attorney.
Can you just say something about that?
Take it easy, though.
I'm not gonna, I'm gonna be very. I met with Bo, that's the name of the collection attorney. Now, I ran a collection unit for American Express when I was a little pup.
Do you know, meaning, talk a little louder?
Meaning, I was in my twenties. I would tell you that he is, has the worst operation you could think of. All he wants to do is throw him into foreclosure, get me my fees. There are, I don't know how many collection operations throughout the state of Florida, he's the worst one I've ever seen. That's who we stick with. Ask me why, I don't have a clue, except you can, you have some imagination. He's making a lot of money from us, and he's done nothing to handle our delinquency. He never makes one phone call. All he does is throw him into foreclosure.
Is he related to Howard?
Collect our fees.
Now they're waking up.
That's what the board wants.
And they're meeting with him tomorrow with the committee without board members. Jerry's gonna be there.
It's untrue, there is a board member.
Who's that?
Michael Schenkel.
Michael Schenkel, yeah, is everywhere. Michael Schenkel, glad you brought up the name.
You, you asked the question.
Michael Schenkel has, has ingratiated himself with the four, with Francis, Linda, Ann, and Paul, and has become the swing vote. And Michael Schenkel has more, has several illegal tenants in this community at this time. Unregistered, never passed through the board, and they are not doing anything about it. Steve knows about this, he knows about it, but he doesn't talk.
Is he current on his maintenance and assessments?
Huh?
Is he current on his maintenance and assessments?
What does that got to do with the illegal fact?
It's a simple question.
I have no idea.
Oh, you don't know?
Yes, I don't know.
He is current except for like one thing, I saw he wasn't current on something small, but that's not the point.
Well, I thought, I thought this meeting, besides scorching people, I thought this meeting was to tell us why we have a budget deficit.
We're just, we are, we're telling you, we're not, we're not wearing it.
People who are seeing their assessments and maintenance are not part of that problem. So you're extending just to get a little bit.
Wait a minute, Jerry, wait a minute. If those tenants weren't there, that place is owned by a millionaire, he would be paying the maintenance and assessment. So when you have something against million, you seem to have something against millionaire. I have nothing against millionaire.
Something wrong with having money.
Not a thing. I'm just extending, you said.
You're here to tell us about why we have our deficit.
Going off the beaten track.
Right, exactly, you're also beating, yeah, I like that when you just like beat somebody.
Enough, Jerry, Jerry, I heard you.
That's why I'm here, to make sure you stick to your subject.
Please.
So why would you say that, it's not the point?
Well, you have your meeting, I'll shut up. Okay, in answer to you, Rhoda, they're going to have this committee, which is not a, has one board member on it, Michael Schenkel, and some other people who I don't believe are qualified to be on a delinquency committee because they don't have the background. But that's the president's choice, because those are the president's friends, and they get to go on.
Mark Jones.
Please!
Mark Jones is on the committee, he knows more than you do.
They're volunteers.
He knows more than you do.
Look, you're saying things that I can't just sit here and give misinformation.
Okay, let's, let's call it. I don't wanna go, I don't wanna fight with you.
It's a one-way street, I've never heard of a conversation that only comes from one.
We're not having a conversation, we're having a meeting.
That has nothing to do with it.
It does.
This is not a speech. Is this a speech, are you giving a speech?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry for interrupting you.
You're sorry?
I'm sorry for interrupting you.
No, go stand in the corner.
I think I will.
This is more interesting than I thought.
How is it possible that people continue to live in this community?
What about his girlfriend, who's there?
Owing thousands of dollars, living here three to four years and never making one, one payment to the association?
Very simple.
How is that possible?
Very simple.
Knowing that, knowing that occurs, what gives anyone the desire, that, that are good payers, to pay anything to the association?
Okay.
And you said, and, and it's been said that if one, if it's allowed for one person, it has to be allowed for others. And now, do you see what, do you see where this is leading? Good people are gonna see, hey, this guy didn't pay for three or four years. Now, I'm not gonna pay for three or four years, then they shouldn't be allowed to do anything to me, and that would be discrimination. Because they allow these other people.
I'll take it backwards.
Right?
I'll take you last.
And that's the problem we have, when two hundred people aren't paying an average of two to three hundred dollars a week.